President in charge of the chamber. I'm really pleased to be able to bring to you kind of a unique event today because the three candidates we'll be hearing from today, unless something really weird happens, are going to be sitting on the Newton City Council come January without having faced an opponent in a race. And we'll get a little more into that discussion and all of us, the candidates, how they feel about that. But we have with us Brittany Hume-Charm, who is going to be the Ward Five at Large City Councilor, Brian Golden, Ward Seven at Large, and Jacob Silver, the Ward Eight at Large. I let everybody know that this is going to be a conversation about some things that we think are important to the business community. Interested in getting to know them a little bit. Maybe we'll ask more personal questions because they're not campaigning nearly as much or having the opportunity to participate in debates that other organizations are doing. So we'll try to get into that. So I wanted to start by asking each candidate to introduce themselves. But particularly tell us about your professional and business experience. I'll start with you, Brittany, if you could, and welcome.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany and I'm running for the at-large seat from Ward Five. As Greg said, I live in Wabanen with my husband and two sons. My older one is seven. He's a second grader at service. My younger one is three. This means I am going to be a Newton Public Schools parent until 2040, which seems like an impossibly long period of time, but it means I'm very invested in the future of our city and our community and schools. I grew up attending excellent diverse public schools, K through 12, where I saw from an early age how public laws and programs can create opportunities for everyone to either feel welcome and thrive or to be discriminated against and to help divide. That experience really made me want to go to a place where I could learn how to help level the playing field and build more inclusive communities. So I went to Princeton and studied policy where I focused on some of the major domestic social policies at the time, including same-sex marriage and women's equality. After graduation, I looked for opportunities to have a positive social impact in the private sector. I joined McKinsey where I specialized in their social sector office and I was working with major foundations and global institutions like the Gates Foundation to be working on issues like global health and education. After that, I went to Johnson and Johnson where I was managing a global portfolio of programs focused on preventing HIV in women and children. Then I went and got my MBA out at Berkeley in California. And from there, sat on both sides of the table to say, how can we be identifying, scaling, identifying and scaling innovative solutions that can help close the global health access gap? So I was first a funder in private philanthropy and then for 10 years I was working inside tech startups where I was leading global business development and partnerships. That includes a drone delivery company and also an AI company working on global health supply chains. But that actually all ended last fall when the new administration came in. As many of you all know, global health was at the tip of the spear and was very quickly decimated. I lost my job and many incredibly qualified people that I know, research scientists and physicians and aid workers, lost their jobs. And it was really devastating and it still is. But what I realized was that I needed to have more of an impact where I could and that that where was at the local level. So I decided to investigate this opportunity here and also I found an incredible fellowship that's part of a national program that places people into mayor's offices across the country. I'm currently an executive fellow in the city of Boston, working in the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion where I'm bringing my work, building cross-sector partnerships to support small businesses to close the access to capital gap. And I'm learning a lot about about community investment and also learning from Mayor Wu and being inspired by what she does. And it's helping to inform what I can bring to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We'll talk about some of those things in a little bit. Jacob Silver, welcome. Why don't you tell us a little about your background, including your business and professional experience?
Absolutely. Well, thanks for having us again. My name is Jacob Silver. I've been in Newton since 2016. Been in Massachusetts most of my adult life and I was actually originally born here, but I grew up in Maine. I've been working in the technology and business arena for the last 30 years. First in IT, then in renewable energy, and then in online business for the last 12 or so years. In between there, I got an undergraduate degree at Harvard and a graduate degree, an MBA and a master's in engineering at MIT. And yeah, so the last three years, that's basically what I've been working on. I run my own business right now. I've always tried to be involved at a local level in one way or the other, and I was raised in a very involved family, either in the PTO or my father was a selectman for almost 30 years in the town that I grew up in. I have two kids in the Newton Public School system as well.
Jacob, what is your business that you currently have now?
A digital marketing business. So we support digital marketing companies with their online endeavors.
You have employees or is it something you do yourself?
We have employees. Yeah, we've fluctuated over time depending on how big we've been. We've been as big as 40 people and as small as a handful of people.
Great. Thank you. Brian Golden, welcome. Nice to see you again. Come on and tell us about your experience, which I think people find pretty interesting.
No, thank you, Greg. Thanks to you and your team for pulling this together and thanks for everyone who's joining the conversation this afternoon. My name is Brian Golden. I'm a resident of Newton, Ward Seven over near Boston College, just off of Commonwealth Avenue. My wife Kristen and I have five children, three still in the Newton system. We have two at Newton North and we have one at the Ward School in the fifth grade. I grew up in Alston over by Harvard Stadium and the Business School near Western Avenue. And my father, however, was a Newton police officer most of his adult life. He was there from 1969 to 1990. He died young. He's 50 years old and he was working right up until the very end. But I took sort of my lead from my dad, who was not just a police officer or a public servant in that regard out here in Newton, but he ran the Allson Civic Association for years. He ran the Little League for years. Very involved, heavily involved in the recovery community, both in Alston, Brighton and in Newton. And so when we ended up starting a family, Newton was a good place to invest because we thought someday we might need to access really good public schools. So that was the draw. It was also a budding Boston, so it was sort of second home to us, both geographically and as a result of my father's work. But I got out of Boston Latin School in the eighties, went to college, went to law school, joined the army and I served in the late nineties in a variety of installations domestically. After nine 11, I went back on active duty, which brought me to Bosnia, Iraq and the West Bank and Jordan. Sort of peppered throughout there because I came and went from the army for 30 years. But my civilian work included several years as a state legislator. I represented Alston, Brighton and a piece of Brookline. I left that job to become a commissioner at what is now the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities. Back then it was called the Department of Telecommunications and Energy. I was appointed by Governor Mitt Romney. I ended up at the Boston Redevelopment Authority under Mayor Menino in a senior staff position for about four and a half years. And then for another eight years, I moved into the CEO role with Mayor Marty Walsh and served there as Director of the BRA, now known as the Boston Planning and Development Agency, also the City of Boston Planning Department, depending on which function you're actually focused on. And since then, since 2022, when I exited City Hall, I've been in the private practice of law, primarily real estate development in some of the cities outside of Boston. Mostly I advise municipalities on redevelopment issues associated with land that they own or and are eager to develop and get on the tax rolls. So that's the story. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to stick with you for now because I know you may have to leave early and I wanted to ask you about that experience you've had in Boston, including with the Boston Planning Board. How many employees did you have when you were the head of that?
So the agency fluctuated, but at its lowest, went through sort of an overhaul, some significant personnel comings and goings. At the beginning of the Walsh administration, we were around 200. That was back up around 275 when I exited, 280s maybe.
So you were running this planning board and under two different mayors, engaged in really development of very major projects that are in Boston. And I understand that over your time, you oversaw 90 million square feet of development approvals. I wanted to try to understand that in the context of what that means and why you want to do this job in Newton. And give you an example, in Non-Thomas last year, we had a city, before the city council was a proposal for a 13-unit condo development. The developer said he needed to add three more units to make it whole or make it work pencil out for him. It was a big hole in the ground. It wasn't like it was something else and it was going to be torn down. There were so many meetings, so many hours of discussion, so many hours of public hearing, multiple days of this and as well as community meetings. Ultimately, the developer pulls out, realizing that he doesn't have the votes in the city council. Do you think you're going to have the patience to deal with those kind of small-scale petty debates over, you know, adding three units to building, given the kind of scope of the work you've done? And what would you bring to the conversation?
So I think if you just look at the scale, the 90 million square feet seems like a lot and it is. And some of that is very big stuff. It's towers downtown and it's life science facilities, you know, in different parts of the city. But a whole lot of it was, you know, smaller scale. 20, 30 units would trigger BRA review. Just, you know, to set the table, 20,000 square feet usually triggered Article 80, which is the BRA's Real Estate Development Review Authority and Approval Authority. So, you know, 20 and 30-something unit developments add up and that was a big piece of the whole. And, you know, sometimes it is more work to do the smaller things. The reality is the smaller things are often occurring in residential neighborhoods. They're not the big towers in the financial district and they're not, you know, life science buildings over in the Marine Industrial Park or on Western Avenue. They're nestled more in the residential, traditional residential neighborhoods. And those do take a lot of time because, hey, a lot of people can tolerate a tower in the financial district. There isn't always a war of the worlds over such a thing. That is what downtowns sort of are about. But when you start plopping a 20-unit building where there used to be, you know, 3-2 fams, yeah, you can get some really contentious conversations. So I think as far as my experience and the skillset associated with real estate permitting and planning, it runs the gamut and I'm as comfortable and happy to wade into the smaller things as the bigger things because the smaller things do have a way of impacting people more in their day-to-day life. And the fact that sometimes those conversations are arduous and challenging is fair and just. People, you know, have inhabited these neighborhoods for generations. I know we did in our neighborhood in Alston. And so you're going to do something kind of disruptive with a larger real estate development? Yeah, that's going to take some time.
Have you actually, pardon me for interrupting, but have you actually sat through a zoning and planning meeting in Newton or a land use meeting and actually watched that long and winding road?
I have and I did it because I had decided to run. And, you know, I will say this. I am happy to be sort of critical when it's necessary, you know, on process or on substance. I was pretty impressed with what I saw, just the level and sophistication of the conversation by all parties involved. I thought, you know, people were well-informed, generally well-intentioned, some really passionate objections and feelings on both sides of a particular development matter. But I thought people came to the table ready to have substantive, significant arguments and I think that is fundamentally good for everybody.
One more question related to your experience. So I know you helped eliminate parking mandates in Boston. Is that something that we should carry forward into Newton?
Hey, in the right time and in the right place, but you know, I will, I am going to take the easy out. You may not let me, but I'm going to take the easy out. I haven't had to wrestle with any of this personally yet. And so, but I'm eager to have those conversations where it might work, where it won't work. Because when I left, I have been gone for a little over three years, we were just beginning that. But we're just beginning that process and, you know, there was a lot of nuance and detail to it. So I want to be respectful of that. As I do everything we discuss here today, I don't have any great like definitive pronouncements on anything associated with a lot of Newton nuts and bolts things. I want to be very respectful of what people have done before I have come near the city council. And I want to be really deliberate and intentional thinking about all sides of each argument before I arrive at a decision. So it's really hard for me to be, you know, really clear cut on all controversy.
Pardon me for interrupting, but I just want to keep it out of the question. Jacob, help me understand your views on parking mandates as it relates to, you know, whether they should be required or not in Newton, either for housing or for commercial downtowns?
Well, I think that from my perspective, the biggest issue with the parking ban and the current-
I'm not talking about the parking ban. I'm talking about the requirements that in order to, for someone to go into a project, they need to have a certain number of parking in order for their project to go forward.
I don't think that we can expect a large amounts of mass transportation happening in Newton. And so I think that we have to serve the needs of people and have vehicle parking. I think having not enough vehicle parking and then potentially having people overflow into neighborhoods is a recipe for a lot of people being pretty upset. So, you know, as much as we might like to get away from vehicles, you know, they are the primary mode of transportation in Newton and they're going to continue to be so.
Okay. Brittany, your thoughts about this?
Sure. I think wherever possible, we have to be leaning into having shared lots that are able to be able to have all kinds of businesses nearby, be able to share those spaces, both for employees and for customers. Where you're mandating individual businesses, you know, needing to have certain, certain number of spaces, it feels like, it just feels inefficient to me, right? Like inefficient use of space. Also inefficient use of like space that could be used for the building. It also could be space that could be used for other people's cars when those spaces aren't available. So I think it would likely depend on where the business is. If there are, you know, real opportunities nearby, then I don't think it's necessary or appropriate for a business to be required to have, you know, parking minimums. But if there, you know, if it's the only business in an area in its entirely neighborhoods and it's expecting to be like, you know, a high-traffic business, then, you know, maybe in that instance, you would need to be having some.
Okay. Let me ask you a specific Ward Five question. So Echo Bridge Restaurant in Ward Five wanted a permit to allow Keno. Two of the Ward Five Councilors voted against that. The owner said he needed it to help keep his business sustainable. How would you have voted on allowing Keno at the Echo Bridge Restaurant?
Oh, you know, I would, I don't know. I haven't taken a close look at that one. I mean, I think that we have to be, so I come from a place where, you know, gambling is not allowed in, so I grew up in Louisville, Kentucky. Ironically, gambling is not allowed, you know, in the Louisville area that you go on the riverboats across the river. And it was, it's actually a huge, you know, a huge driver of economic activity for that area just on the other side of the border. But I think that there can be really good reasons to not necessarily want it in your area. You know, would we be willing to do that at all businesses? You know, what, like, is there a slippery slope to that? But I mean, to be honest, I knew that that was, you know, a topic that was going to be addressed before I came on. And so I didn't take a really close look.
Anybody else ever thought about that? If a business says they want to have Keno in their restaurant and they think it's going to help them survive or continue, should they be allowed to have it? Brian, you?
Yeah. So as a general rule, I don't love lotteries and I don't love gambling. But we're not talking about putting the encore over at the Echo Bridge. So I would tend to be supportive of such things. I think they're rather benign. I think they're innocuous. I mean, I come from a world where there were lots of those. And I think in the general scheme of things, low impact, the pathologies associated with them are slight. But if the gain, I'd want to have a really substantive conversation with the owner of the establishment to make sure I bought that this was an important part of that business staying afloat. But yeah, I'd probably be pretty deferential to the owner of the business because we value the business, not so much the Keno. But if it is an important piece of keeping that business going, yeah, I'd be likely to be supportive of that.
Jacob, your thoughts about that?
I mean, I agree with Brian. I'm not a big fan of gambling in general. But at the same point, my personal opinions on whether gambling should be allowed or not is somewhat immaterial. This is about a business being successful. This is about a legal activity. I think I would feel the same way if they said, you know, can we have a liquor license? You know, whether I think condone, you know, drinking or whether I condone pot shops, we still need to support our businesses locally. So I would be supportive of that.
Okay. And let me stick with you with this specific question. So I first became aware of you through a group that you were involved in called Newton Impact. And there's a, which was opposed, I think, help me characterize this right, to that 40B development that was along Route Nine and Boylston Street. And also in general, and the website says that they thought that Ward Eight was a target for these kinds of projects. Help me understand Newton Impact. How you feel about it? How you feel about 40Bs?
Well, generally speaking, I like to see the Newton City Council have control over development projects where possible. 40B, as you probably well know, is a law that was designed to allow municipalities to build affordable housing. That's not how it's used anymore. It's now used by developers to basically override local governments and put in what they want. So generally speaking, I have a problem with that because I think that it takes away the ability of residents to participate in the process of deciding what gets built. So that's how I feel about 40Bs. I think that there are many development projects that are good. There were problems with this project. The first problem was that it was being built on the largest residential floodplain in Newton. A lot of the residents had tremendous amount of concerns about whether the flooding that already existed in their basement would get worse. We wanted to see higher levels of affordability and in fact, in numbers of memos that we put to the zoning board of appeals, we asked for higher levels of affordability to be included. We asked for a building that fit better in the neighborhood. It was being put into a bunch of single-family homes. It's just, you know, depending on how you count it, six or seven-story building. So, so those were really the issues. We have another project at 85 Dudley, which is a fairly large development as well. And I've generally been supportive of that. It's a different type of development. It fits better into the neighborhood in terms of size and scale. It has its problems. It's going to involve taking down a large number of trees, which is a big issue from my perspective. But not all projects are the same. And it was really about, you know, the tremendous number of people in Ward Eight that were really upset about this project that inspired me to step forward and try to lead an effort to shape it better.
So, but that website comes across as being very anti-40B as a concept. Would you like to see it repealed? And how do you feel about those other, that MBTA communities and any other mandate that says, you know, where the state tells a community how to build affordable housing or to build more housing in general because they don't feel communities are doing it on their own?
That's a good question. So first of all, as you know, we've implemented the MBTA Communities Act here in Newton. So I think we need some time to actually see what result, you know, what comes of-
So actually, my question was, how do you feel about the state mandating, telling communities whether, that what they must do in terms of these kinds of projects, zoning?
I would prefer to see local control. I mean, that's just how I feel about this. I think that communities understand better what fits in their communities and what kind of things need to be built and what kind of things should be built. I think the problem with state mandates is we end up in a situation where we have a law that meant to do one thing and does another. And that's what we saw with the 40B, which has obviously been around a long time. And hopefully we won't see that with the MBTK Community Act, but we could.
Right. Brian, how do you feel about the state mandated zoning rules to get communities to build housing that communities might not otherwise build?
Yeah, I support the 40B program and I had a history of that when I served in the legislature. And, but at the same time, I do agree, local control, much better, much. It is ideal that the decisions are made at the local level that create housing for people all along the socioeconomic spectrum. I do subscribe to the notion that Newton must not be just a place for the affluent, maybe even the super affluent. But it is an affluent community and it also is a large enough community that there can be housing developed here of a character and a quality that addresses the needs of people at all income levels, upper, middle, lower. And I think because a lot of municipalities around the city of Boston have not done enough of that, 40B remains a reality. It would be fabulous. It would be nirvana if 40B wasn't necessary. And I look forward to that day where it isn't necessary in Newton. But for now, I think that, you know, the state has made a decision going back decades that that is going to be a significant tool to make sure that people and that municipalities outside of Boston and other, you know, cities are doing their fair share to address real human needs. I'm okay with 40B.
Do you agree that, and MBTA communities too, but the idea that municipalities weren't doing it on their own, so there needed to be some top-down, stake-down regulations to get communities to do that? Do you think that's the right idea?
Yes.
Okay. And Brittany, your thoughts?
I agree. I agree with Brian. I think that, you know, ideally, everyone would, you know, want to have, everyone would be in wild agreement that, you know, the broader social good applies to every township and city. You know, and yes, we should all get on board with this. I think that is, you know, not the case and there are instances in which we need, we need leadership. And that, I think, MBTA Communities Act is an example of saying, you know, this is something that the state needs. And we can't let this go down to, you know, every, every, every single municipality making the decision collectively or it will never happen. So I think it was, I think it was, you know, ultimately a good thing. I'm glad that we passed it. I look forward to those units being built, hopefully, you know, as quickly as possible because I think we need them for a variety of reasons.
Okay. So let me go back. I want to go back to this. The uniqueness of the three of you is that none of you have a competitor and you're going to be first-time city councilors starting in January. And you all, as we heard already, you have different backgrounds, but you have that one thing in common. You're going to run. And I think in one way, that's not ideal. Voters don't get a chance to meet you the way they do someone else. For when you have to campaign, it forces candidates to meet voters and to learn more about issues that maybe they have been asked about, including maybe ones I've asked you today. But also it gives you an idea, opportunity to kind of articulate and think about your answers to that. On the other hand, we've been so divided here in Newton politically, really split in many ways and our council races have become polarized that it strikes me that you guys are, the three of you are in a unique position in that you don't have to be stuck and glued to and affiliated with one group of lawn signs and not another lawn sign. You're not vibrant Newtons candidate or not right-sized Newtons candidate. You know, you can each be going in there kind of without having promised someone you're going to vote for them for a city council president or whatever. So you have a chance to be kind of unique in the council in that you have a unique opportunity to be undefined and go in there and really think and maybe be in the middle or be more of a swing vote, which is something we've lacked a lot of times in the votes. But I'm wondering how you feel about the whole situation and the situation you're going to go in in. Brian, I'll start with you on this one.
So, you know, our politics in this country are fairly rough and downright toxic at times, both at the national, the state and even the local level. I'd argue probably not as bad at the state and local level as they are at the national level. But it can definitely get ugly out there. And as you point out, Greg, it is not, you know, really sort of acid conversations are not foreign in Newton politics either. So my attitude on this is I am at a, I am at a point in life where I don't have to care as much about what one faction or another thinks. You know, look, I've been through really rough races and I sweat a lot when I was a state legislator back in the day. Very different place in life right now. So if this works out for me, great. If it doesn't- So if this works out for me, great. If it doesn't, that is terrific too. But my goal is to be reasonable, to be civil and just try to inform myself and make the right decision um as I see it. And inevitably, some people will be annoyed, but I'm hoping that, you know, after the two year terms up, people step back and say, you know, it was okay. I didn't get everything I wanted. Um, because I can't imagine any of the factions that I perceive out in the Newton civic culture being all that thrilled with me on everything. But I'd like to think people step back and say, he was okay. You know, he he listened to us and he sought compromise. He sought consensus. He really tried to work to address the concerns that were raised. And, you know, just to veer off over into development a bit, that that's pretty rough here and I uh I am I am pro-development. I believe the city needs significant new development. Does that mean everything goes? Absolutely not. Everything is not going to go. I feel pretty confident of that. But my gut, my goal is to get to yes. Um, and and I'm hoping that, you know, this may be, I don't know, delusional. Some people tell me, no, you'll run into things where there's no support at all. I'm willing to take it one day at a time, one project at a time, one proposal at a time, neighborhood by neighborhood, and just make the best decision I can.
Great. Jacob, I same question for you. I I we don't even have a truly competitive mayor's race. Why do you think we're in this situation where so few people raise their hands for so few races?
Well, so I will remind you that for two weeks I was in a competitive race, so and I decided to run against uh, two incumbents, uh, one of whom had been serving since nineteen ninety six. So I was ready to run a competitive race and actually I was pretty excited about it. Uh, I'm, you know, obviously, I'm not going to tell you I'm not happy that I'm not running a competitive race now. But I do think that we need more competitive races and I think as a society, we've underinvested in our political apparatus. We just haven't had enough people stepping forward to serve. And we're paying the price of that, which is that there is extremely low trust in government now, and that extends from the local level all the way to the federal level. So I think the only thing that you can do in this case is step forward and try to make a change.
And how would you, what's your approach going to be?
Well, for starters, standing up and running is the first, the best thing you can do. And um, you know, I'm just happy to see that we have at least the number of competitive races that we do. The second is that we have a lot of people who uh don't feel like their voices are being heard. And I think that that's one of the areas that I can help remedy because in business, I've found success not in speaking first, but in speaking last. And by listening carefully to what people had to say and then reflecting that back to them in terms of how we make decisions. So that's my approach. Uh, I hope it will be successful. I think uh the best way to get to common ground is to have people feel like they're being heard.
Great, thank you. Brittany, the same question, right? You know, in twenty sixteen, when Trump was elected the first time, we saw a wave of people jump into elections, including particularly a wave of women, but at all levels all around the country. Why didn't that happen this year?
Um, well, um, why didn't that happen this year? I mean, I would say actually maybe it didn't happen in Newton. I think it is happening um uh in to some degree. So, you know, I was
It happened in Newton.
You know, uh, why do I think it's not happening in Newton? Well, you know, when I tell people in Newton that I'm running, um, the typical response is, why? Um, and asked that way, and sometimes um sometimes, you know, people chime in and say like, wow, politics in Newton is a blood sport. And I'm like, that is so unfortunate um that it is, that that is the the perception. Um, and um and also I think that people recognize it is a huge amount of time. Uh, and that um, you know, that it's uh something that is um, you know, that there's a lot of work and commitment that goes into it. Um, and you know, a lot of people are in really busy chapters of their lives where they have two working parent households um and uh and are trying to, you know, make ends meet in a time when it's increasingly unaffordable. Uh, and so the, you know, the return per hour of city council work um is uh is not the same um as, you know, some of the things that people are doing during their day job. So um, I think that people see that there's an opportunity cost and whether that's family time or that that's like peace of mind and not wanting to, you know, feel like you have to take your family through, um, you know, like a a blood sport with you. Um, I think that that's uh, that's part of it. Yeah.
Let me, and let me stick with you. I'd ask you, you mentioned in your professional experience right now, you're working with small businesses. Um, there's so much economic uncertainty right now. Our small shops are small restaurants are suffering and challenged in so many ways. How can you help them? How can we help them?
Yeah, um, I think the 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 most immediate thing that we can do is to show up for our small businesses um to be um increasing foot traffic however we can. Um, uh, obviously, over the long term, that means having um more customers in Newton, uh, which means more housing. Um, you know, actually helping to bring more business to the village centers. Um, uh, but I think in the short term, we're dealing with, um, you know, we're dealing with people trying to understand like what's going to happen with the cost of my inputs. Um, am I gonna, um, am I gonna be able to, you know, still offer the same recipe um for all the, you know, delicious baked goods that we have in Newton Center? Am I going to have to start swapping out some of my ingredients? Am I going to have to raise prices? I think showing support for our small businesses um and really, you know, shopping locally, doing all that we can to be like Oliver Newton is doing an amazing job to be promoting some of these small businesses, also you guys. Um, and and that's the most immediate thing is like, we need to be voting with our dollars, but
I appreciate that, but what are the ideas that you might deliver into the council, given your kind of professional experience that goes beyond that?
Yeah, well, I think there are lots of other things that we could be doing. So, I mean, in my, in my work right now, um, in Boston City Hall, it is specifically focused on small businesses that are in economically disadvantaged neighborhoods that are at risk of displacement. So those smaller businesses really need um increased access to capital um and other resources like TA um to be able to um to be able to actually take in external capital to stabilize and grow their businesses and not get displaced. So that's sort of the the more specific focus there. Um, I think though there are lots of different tools um in a toolbox that you can be using, like we could be having um programs like storefront grants um to be helping, you know, there's several shopping centers that are just right up the road from me that, you know, could maybe benefit by, you know, having people take a fresh look at what they're doing. Are there ways that we can be able to do that? Um, uh, are there um opportunities for us to be creating? Um, uh, you know, the idea of an incubator has come up multiple times. Um, are I always look at that Bigelow space in Newton Center and go like, it has so many great windows. Like it's right there. It's right on the T. Is there a way that we could be able to make something right here that also has like coaching for small businesses? I would love to be able to do something like that. Um, so those are just a couple of ideas.
Okay, Jacob, your thoughts?
Well, one of the things that I've heard more than once is that the process of interacting with our city government uh in order to get permits and things like that is challenging. And my guess is that the city employees probably know how to fix this. And so my top goal would be to figure out and work uh in the city to try to figure out how to solve these problems so that it's easier to get things done. Um, it doesn't mean getting rid of all of our regulations, uh, but what it does mean is making it easier to do business. And so um I'm eager to find out how we can accomplish that.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
So, uh, two fundamental things. Yes, it's about the ease of getting a a business cited, um permitted license, health inspectors. I know Mark Laredo has spent a lot of time talking about that and thinking about that, making all of City Hall uh very customer friendly, both for residents and and um commercial enterprises. Very key to have sort of a holistic look at that and see what can be done to make that smoother and 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 more expeditious. But um, there's no substitute in sort of the small business arena for foot traffic. Um, it's foot traffic. It's about human beings moving through uh a commercial district. Um, so you get your business going by working with government regulators, but your business thrives only because you've got human beings passing by and and coming in. And that gets back to, um, look, is this going to be a city that experiences modest, consistent growth over time that helps drive um businesses to increased levels of success? I mean, I think anybody in any one of the village squares is going to tell you about that. They want, they want human beings walking on the sidewalks in front of their establishments.
Okay, and let me ask you now, especially through your experience, attracting big businesses here. You know, we've lost TripAdvisor to Needham, we lost NBC ten and and Big Belly all to Needham, and some two of those cases, uh, they were attacked. There were TIFs offered, uh, TripAdvisor and NBC ten got TIFs to go to Needham. What's the way for Newton to attract larger employers here? And Brian, we'll start with you since you've
So, everybody hates a tax deal. Everybody except maybe the recipient of the tax deal. But it 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 is just unnatural to feel good about, hey, you're paying, whether you're resident uh uh or or commercial business, you're all paying your chapter fifty nine taxes, the way you're supposed to, the way it's envisioned envisioned in mass general laws. But this one is really important and we're going to give them a deal. It might be a TIF. I mean, in a broader sense, it could be a DIF. Um, it could be a one twenty one A. It could be a a special tax agreement. There's a variety of devices that, you know, um, that could be deployed. They are historically not deployed in Newton. Um, and I salute that. That is a a tax deal should be a last resort. However, there are occasions where you can land something perhaps that has a profound benefit on the economic well being of a city. Um, and maybe you don't realize that benefit immediately, or you realize it less so because you're ramping up to um the full tax burden that that will be expected eventually. But I think I think there should at least be conversations about whether any of these devices make sense depending on what is being proposed. Um, you decided it it it's been done in Needham. There's an appetite there. There has been an awful lot of it done in Boston, though nowhere near as much of it as have been done in other major American cities. Boston, I think, has a really exacting standard um when when they scrutinize a a petition for some kind of a tax deal, but I think it needs to be considered. There may be places for a significant business to locate that can be lured in uh with a tax deal.
Where So separate, separate from tax deals, any idea how we would attract larger companies here? What's the path to doing that?
Well, I I think that gets back to, you know, zoning and permitting. Is there an appetite uh to give the entity even albeit paying its full share of taxes, still has to jump through some significant hurdles from a zoning uh perspective? But given that the city council has, you know, the special permitting authority, I think there should be um a willingness to entertain significant density. If so, like, for instance, you you cite travel, um, uh TripAdvisor. That's a significant structure and it doesn't fit just about everywhere, but there has to be maybe an appetite to really indulge to consider very aggressively instead of dismissing things out of hand because they may not conform to existing.
Jacob, same question about how how would you help attract larger employers to Newton?
So I'm going to split that into two parts. I'll try to do this quickly. First of all, there's bigger employers. Um, and then second of all, there are tax revenues. So we have our bigger employers. Our biggest employer is Newton Wellesley Hospital, um, which is a nonprofit. Obviously, it's phenomenal to have such a wonderful resource in our backyard, but it doesn't necessarily contribute to tax revenues. So then we have a lot of very significant real estate that does contribute to commercial tax revenues in the form of our Chestnut Hill Mall, the street, a a whole number of facilities. And um, you know, the mall is not doing well in most of the country. It still seems to be doing okay where we are, but I don't think we want to lose those uh kind of commercial taxpayers. So I think we need to understand what we can do just to support them more and to make sure that they are successful. Then the second piece is to bring in new employers. And so new employers, especially if they're large employers, are going to need some kind of place to set up. Probably thirty or so years ago, if you looked at where employers were setting up, they were setting up on the one twenty eight loop. They were not setting up in Boston for the most part. Kendall Square had abandoned buildings um and was not a particularly nice place. That changed. I think it's going to change back, and I think the reason it's going to change back is because people like to live where we are. Uh, we have a tremendous populace and we do have places where we could put more commercial real estate. Uh, so I think we need to look really carefully at where can we get uh buildings built that don't interrupt our residential neighborhoods, give people easy access, because we do have a chunk of uh our city located along a major highway. And um, and then figure out what employers out there would want to take advantage of our workforce.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Greg. I just want to say I have a heavy, very heavy heart about this, but the law firm I've been with for three years um was in a tower downtown. And in the spring, they decided we do not need this expense any longer. And they cut their rent in half and they moved out to one twenty eight. Um, it was logical. They didn't need to be there anymore. And I regret that, you know, that decision is being made an awful lot. But now that I put on my uh Newton City Council hat, it is an opportunity. It is an opportunity to give people a business location proximate to the city of Boston, proximate to some um some MBTA facilities, you know, Green Line out along Route nine um at a much lower cost. So I think there could be a lot more interest in moving this way because it is the ultimate hybrid. You're close to Boston. Uh, you're getting a lot of the advantages of that, but you're also paying less for the
I can just follow up briefly too. Uh, very quickly, I was bummed that Riverside eliminated a lot of their commercial. Um, of course, asking to build biotech and and facilities right now is totally crazy. I mean, that would be asking them to lose money, but um you know, those kind of mixed use, especially when we're developing such a large space, it would be really nice to figure out what we can do in terms of commercial, not just retail. Retail is great, obviously, but some kind of commercial as well.
Okay, I I'm going to go to Brittany. We're we're a little tight on time, so are we going to try to talk, either talk fast or keep your answers short?
Sure. Um, so I think there's a a couple of pieces of this. One, I think, is having the infrastructure that's in place for a large employer to find Newton to be desirable. Um, I think we do have access lines um for by highways. We have the Green Line. We have the commuter rail. Those need to run better. That's not something the city council can control. But we also need to have the infrastructure of housing so that people can have places for all different kinds of employee, their employees to find housing that would be at all different levels. And right now, we don't have the diversity of housing that we would need to be able to really accommodate um a a large employer like that. Um, I also think there's there's something that we can be doing to um be be like boosting our reputation, sort of putting on a a, you know, a a slightly more um modern customer facing glow um as we think about how to be pulling people in. I think that starts with the things that are as basic as the website. Um, how can we be showing that we are a, you know, modern um, modern place that has also like good real estate options? Um, do we have any that people can be moving into? How can we be helping to showcase some of those? Um, so I think like making it easy for people to be, you know, seeing the opportunity is, that's a marketing problem.
Great, thank you. All right, Jacob, this one's for you. Um, how do we balance the need to protect our planet with the need to keep Newton competitive to businesses, as you mentioned, but also affordable when we do things that sometimes will riot, i- i- impose restrictions on buildings or that may raise the cost of housing or raise the cost of operating a building, building a building?
Um, I don't think there's an easy answer because one of the things that we love the most about Newton, which is our trees, our green space, our open space, is naturally in conflict with building. Um, you know, putting more housing means more vehicles. And again, like I can't, you know,
Talking, Jacob, specifically about whether you mandate electrification or other rules that make actual construction more expensive, make affordability.
Um, yeah, I'm concerned about mandating electrification. I'll tell you why. Um, I am concerned about not having a diversity of fuel types. Uh, and I worked in renewable energy, so I'm I'm probably about as green as it gets. as green as it gets. But, you know, the counterpoint to that is that we have natural gas lines that are constantly leaking. So I don't know that there's an easy answer here, but I'm concerned about mandating anything that not only reduces our flexibility to fuel supplies, energy is already one of the, you know, we're ranked 48 in the country for energy costs, which also affects affordability. But also, we're increasing the cost of building, and, you know, kind of going back to the point that anything we do that increases the cost of building is going to increase the cost of living.
I'm going to stop you there. Brittany, how do we justify putting mandates on how we, what we build, or whether we eliminate plastic water bottles or anything else environmental, when we have an administration that thinks the whole thing is a hoax?
Oh, I mean, I think we have, we've always been a climate leader. I think that our, our position on that has absolutely nothing to do with the White House. And I, I think that certainly voters, I, I would hope also businesses, I think generally ascribe to that, that value set and philosophy. I think we can be also making the business case for people, right? Like, we all just learned that our gas costs are going to be going up another 13% this year. That's, you know, that's not, no one's salary is naturally rising at a COLA of 13%. And, you know, we have to be helping to, like, move the needle forward, helping to show them how we can be continuing to be environmental leaders, because that's the right thing to do that we in Massachusetts and Newton do. And also, it's going to be helping them to reduce their costs over the long term, both individually for businesses and for the city in general.
Okay. Right.
So, I, I think we'll learn, hopefully, a lot more in the next couple of months. The fossil-free fuel demonstration project, of which Newton is a part, one of the 10 municipalities that signed on, has got reporting requirements the end of this month. Those reports, that data goes up to, to the State Department of Energy Resources, the DOE-R. They compare that to other municipalities who aren't part of the pilot, trying to discern what effect is it having? Is it having a harmful effect? Is it having a positive effect? Is it neutral? I think we'll learn a lot more about that. But let's face it, that, that fossil-free demonstration project is, is marginal. It's, it's only dealing with new construction. The real issue that we're all going to have to wrestle with as a society is the existing, you know, built environment, legacy stock. How do we transition those out? That is the long-term challenge that's going to be a real problem. But we're going to start to learn a lot more about this fossil fuel approach to new development.
Isn't the challenge right now, though, that no matter what we do to try to save the planet, federally, we're doing the opposite? So what is a little corner in Massachusetts?
Because this is a snapshot in time. This is what, it's the beauty of federalism, right? Yeah, it'd be nice to have the national state and localities and sink on, on many things in life. But that isn't the way it always works. And sometimes, the states and the municipalities have to be the laboratories, the laboratories for democracy, the laboratories for lots of innovative policy approaches. So, you know, all you can do really right now is saw the wood in front of you, right? You, you take care of business as it is presented to you here at the local level. And hopefully, that is, demonstrates a, a course of action that is beneficial for the state and the nation as a whole. And so you can only do what you can do.
We're in the final moments here, and I, I've told you all ahead of time that we wanted to ask you the one question that we've been asking all our candidates this season. If you could time travel to any one day in history, just observe, you can't change in them, but watch one day in history to observe it, which one would you choose? And Jacob, we'll start with you.
Thanks. It's a fun question. I think I would travel back to VE Day, so Victory in Europe Day. And the reason is because I think it is a moment in time where there was a common, shared success. Obviously, it represented a lot of bad things happening to people as well. But it was a certain moment in time where people could feel like they collectively had achieved something and felt that way together. And I, and I feel like that's one of the things that I see us missing in our society as a common, shared goal. So I think, you know, it would be interesting to view that and sort of imagine how can we replicate that in our society, so that we can all feel like we have something we're fighting for.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
So Jacob stole peace of mind. I was going to go with the day, you know, human heroism, incredible sacrifice for a great global good. I mean, where do you begin on, on, on what occurred that day, what people were willing to do to save the world? But since that, I'll collapse into VE Day, I'll go with Appomattox Courthouse, the end of the Civil War. And again, more ceremonial, right? It's not a battle on the day, but it's Lee surrenders to Grant. We begin to knit the nation back together again. It's warts and all, it's flaws and all, but it began to put us on a trajectory to a more positive place, a more humane place. It is a work that is definitely unfinished. But Appomattox Courthouse, April 1865, that is a seminal moment that would have been worth gazing upon for a few minutes.
Great. Thank you, Brittany. You get the last word here.
Yeah. I almost had Jacob's, and I agree with a lot of the sentiments here. But I think there's, we, I think we were all reflecting, you know, a lot on history. And so the things like Boston Tea Party, World War II, Civil Rights Movement, I think, there's a lot of echoes from history that we're all experiencing now. I chose one that was more recent. Also, November 4th, not November 4th, 2025, but 17 years earlier, November 4th, 2008, I would want to be in Grant Park, when Barack Obama was giving his acceptance speech. I think back on this moment all the time of like, we had such joy and hope and unity as a country. And I remember exactly where I was and where I was sitting, and the just absolute exuberance and feeling like, wow, like, we're really changing. And I really regret that that has, you know, that we aren't in that place anymore. But I want to get back there. So I could use a real dose of that, of that joy and hope.
Wow, thank you. I always wonder if maybe this question's run its course, but you all keep coming up with good answers. So thank you for that. More importantly, thank you for your willingness to serve. And this was really interesting. So I really appreciate your time and your thoughtfulness. And we all look forward to working with you and collaborating with you on the city council next year. So thank you, everybody. Everyone, reminder, we will share this video, they're all on our website, as well as the schedule for upcoming videos, upcoming debates that we have in the remaining, in the actual contest. Have a great day, everybody.